I want to welcome everybody to our city council meeting. We've got sort of a special evening here tonight and along with a very special as usual city council meeting. But tonight is Brian Myers' last night to be with us at our city council meeting. He has been elected to the Iowa House and he's going to represent some of his same area down there in Ward Four. But I wanted Brian to be here tonight. We had sort of a little reception out here earlier for him. But Brian's been with us since 2007. We had a special election at that time and Brian stepped up and I think has done an outstanding job for the folks in Ward Four. He has fought for all kinds of things. We don't have a library yet, Brian, but we're working on it. But everything from Indianola Road, we worked on the fort, we worked on a large plan with a fort and the zoo and the golf course and Southridge Mall and lots of things have moved forward in a really positive way down in that Ward Four. So so much of it has to do with the work that Brian did, not only himself, but also working closely with the neighborhoods. And so I wanted to not only thank Brian personally and for all the members of our council, but ask him if he would to step up and maybe say a few words. So let's give Brian Meyer a great big hand.
Well, I want to start by thanking first the mayor and the city council. Just such a wonderful experience that I had in these last six years, almost seven years, being on the city council. And I know a lot of people wonder, how do we interact with each other and how do we react to each other? I can tell you that all of us respect each other and all of us work together really well. And there is, when it comes to making this a great city, there is no fights, there are absolutely no personality disputes. And I will tell you this, that this is a great city council that you have. And I also want to just make a short statement about our staff. From the city manager, we have three direct reports, the city manager, the city clerk and the city attorney, who are all wonderful. And Rick, your staff is just amazing. I have worked so well with everybody that's on the staff and we had this discussion on Thursday. I can't remember a time, any time, in the last six or seven years that I've ever had any problems with staff. And I just, just wonderful to have work here. My neighborhoods, loved every minute of working with my neighborhood associations, you know, and I'm, I'm going to miss it. I really am going to miss this job. I'm on to new things now, but I still plan to stay engaged with my neighborhood, the Eastern Lake neighborhood. And you might see me even come up to this podium here. So thanks to everybody and to the city council and the mayor. Thank you for a good six, seven years. Thanks.
If you can, I'd like to have the whole council come down. We've got a kind of a special presentation and we'd sort of like to, I think, take a photo this evening. And so... All right, Brian, not only from all the staff that you've honored already, but from the city council, we've got a special momento, so to speak, that hopefully you'll display proudly and as you look at it and know what has to happen each day and whatever time it is, day or night, you'll, you'll remember us in your time here on the city council. And I want to thank you again for being willing to step up and serve all those in I will ask the clerk quickly to take role, please.
County.
Here. the fourth ward.
Coleman.
And I know you'll do a great job up at the legislature and we look forward to working
Here.
Moore.
Here.
with you up there.
Grease.
And by the way, to everybody, it's always good to have more and more people who are
Here.
Mahaffey.
Here.
Hensley.
up there that have spent a few minutes walking in our shoes here.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, item two is approving the Des Moines Municipal Housing Agency payment standards. It's a board communication number thirteen dash five twenty-nine. They kind of understand what some of our issues are. So Brian, in that regard, we look forward to working with you. Is there anybody here in the audience to speak to the municipal housing agency, item
Thanks.
Thanks.
Okay.
Thanks again, everybody.
two approving the housing agency payment standards?
We've got to look at it.
Oh, yeah.
He will, he just didn't want to do it in front of us.
I'll move it.
All right, the item's been moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Oh, that's wonderful.
Aye.
Thank you.
Opposed?
Very nice.
Item passes.
Now I'm going to sit in the audience for a little bit.
And Brian, this is a quick meeting here, so we're going to ask a motion to adjourn All right, I think, is that it for tonight? All right, we're going to start our city council meeting right now. the municipal housing agency governing board. It's been moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We sit adjourned. All right, we are going to move here in a second to the city council meeting. And but prior to that, we're going to have a short word or invocation by our own council member, Hallie Grease, who if we offer all of you the opportunity to participate with us, and we'd ask you to stand at this time.
Please join me in a word of prayer. God, we just thank you for today. God, we thank you for our system of government that is fair and represents the people. We thank you for our country and the freedoms that we have here. God, we pray for election day tomorrow, God. We thank you for the candidates that are running and their willingness to serve in that capacity. God, we thank you for Brian Meyer and just his willingness to serve the residents of Des Moines and now the citizens of Iowa. God, we just pray that you would bless him on his, on his journey. God, we pray that you would be with us tonight and we invoke you to join us in our meeting. We pray for wisdom and guidance as we make decisions that affect those around us. We pray these things in your name, amen.
All right, we'll open our city council meeting. I'll ask the clerk, please take role.
County.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Moore.
Grease.
Mahaffey.
Here.
Hensley.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, item two is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended.
Move.
It's been moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes unanimously. Item three is approving the consent agenda tonight. These are items three through thirty-five. And these items are all taken as a routine items and will be enacted by one roll call vote unless somebody either in the audience or a member of the city council pulls any items for additional information or clarification this evening. Item five, council members, county and Moore vote no. And item thirty-three, council member Moore wishes to speak. Is there anybody in the audience has another item that they would like to pull for additional clarification or discussion? Again, items three through thirty-five.
Seen, and I'll move the consent agenda.
All right. It's been moved. Any discussion? Coleman? I'm assuming you're for it.
Yes.
Six yes.
All right, takes us to item thirty-three. Item thirty-three is a purchase of IA Pro Police Officer Incident Tracking Software Program and Maintenance Agreement with CI Technologies Inc., Michael Bloomberg, president, forty-two thousand, three hundred dollars, council communication number thirteen dash five thirty-eight. Mr. Moore.
I don't have a problem with the cost on this, but when I start reading the council communications, several things drew my attention to it. One was under the synopsis that this is an early warning system which tracks employee performance. It will assist with identification of training needs, note outstanding actions and provide information enhanced professional services. And then under additional information, the police department has been interested in finding an avenue to keep centralized records on reported incidents involving officers. I'd just like to, I'm going to move that we pull this and refer it back to the manager and legal. I want to be sure that there aren't any conflicts with city policies or employee contracts on this as far as performance appraisals are concerned.
All right, there's a motion to send to the city manager for further clarification.
What's the timing? Can I just ask a question on the timing? Is there a timing issue?
Just get back to next meeting? Okay.
Question, wouldn't this already have been accomplished before it ever came to us? Hadn't it been reviewed and that?
Well, Mr. Mahaffey, I think it has, but when Mr. Moore asked me the question this afternoon, I couldn't answer it definitively. So it's fine with me. I don't think there's any, I'm looking at the chief, I don't think there's any particular problem with a two-week delay. So it's, I think it's fine.
Six yes.
All right, that completes the consent agenda and takes us to item thirty-six. Item thirty-six is the first consideration of an ordinance meaning chapter one fourteen in the municipal code submitting traffic regulation changes for the central business district, council communication number thirteen dash five thirty-three. Is there anybody in the audience that has any questions on these traffic regulation changes in the CBD? Ms. Hensley?
I'm going to move the first reading, and I did ask a question on it and I received some information, but I just want to make sure because I've had calls from constituents that are down in this area that were sensitive to the loading zones in front of the Fitch Building and some of the other major buildings down there. And I know Candy, we got part of it, but if we could just do some double checking with them because there has been some question about parking and the increased costs for individuals down in that area. So I just want to make sure that fixing a problem for one property doesn't create a problem for another property owner down there.
Mrs. Hensley, we'd be happy to investigate that. If you're doing first reading tonight, we'll have the, we'll have the answer for you by second reading.
We'll do first reading tonight and then we can waive the third reading when it comes back in two weeks. So I'll move item thirty-six.
Six yes.
All right, that completes the consent agenda and takes us to item thirty-six. Item thirty-six is the first consideration of an ordinance meaning chapter one fourteen in the municipal code submitting traffic regulation changes for the central business district, council communication number thirteen dash five thirty-three. Is there anybody in the audience that has any questions on these traffic regulation changes in the CBD? Ms. Hensley?
I'm going to move the first reading, and I did ask a question on it and I received some information, but I just want to make sure because I've had calls from constituents that are down in this area that were sensitive to the loading zones in front of the Fitch Building and some of the other major buildings down there. And I know Candy, we got part of it, but if we could just do some double checking with them because there has been some question about parking and the increased costs for individuals down in that area. So I just want to make sure that fixing a problem for one property doesn't create a problem for another property owner down there.
Mrs. Hensley, we'd be happy to investigate that. If you're doing first reading tonight, we'll have the, we'll have the answer for you by second reading.
We'll do first reading tonight and then we can waive the third reading when it comes back in two weeks. So I'll move item thirty-six.
Six yes.
All right, item thirty-seven, I thought that we ought to put on our city council agenda this evening, a brief discussion involving my thoughts, but also to hopefully refer to the city manager to discuss the vacancy of Ward Four. In the past, Brian, still sitting here in the audience, in his case, I don't believe that we did have an appointment, but his election came very quickly and then also he then took office, I believe, right, right after the election. So in this particular case, I think that we need to get some input from the city attorney and the city manager just to, to look at all the detail and legalities around how we should handle it. But I would at least suggest that we ought to consider, because we've got a budget, number of issues coming up, and I think certainly Ward Four needs to be represented in that, that discussion. And I think that it would be appropriate for us, even if we had a, an election in the near term, and I'm saying probably in the next quarter or whatever, is allowed by law, that fourth ward needs to have some consideration, needs to have input in this. And I know there's a lot of folks that have worked closely with, with Brian, and I think there may be some folks that would be interested in serving, certainly in representing that ward. I would hope that what we could do, at least initially, is have our at-large council folks at least screen the first set of applicants. I mean, I'm not sure whether we're going to get two or we're going to get twenty, and then present it as we did in the past when we had some of these openings and have the full council interview them, much like we would finalists for a position that reports directly to the council, whether it be the city attorney or the city manager or city clerk's position for human rights, quite frankly. But if, if that makes sense, that would be sort of my recommendation to refer it for detail, to report back at the next meeting to the city attorney and the city manager. And would anybody has any thoughts? We can either talk about them this evening or have further discussion between now and in the next meeting to sort out how we're going to do that. Anybody have any thoughts, Ms. Hensley?
Well, I agree. I think it's really important. We're at a, coming into a very busy time for us with the budget and a lot of other issues and being up at the Capitol and, and also looking ahead to the franchise fee and the referendum. So I think it's important that we have representation for Ward Four. I like your idea of having maybe the at-large do the initial screening of the candidates and then potentially having them come and we can have an interview process set up. I think that's important as well. I do believe, though, it's important that if there is an appointment and we have precedent set for appointment, that they are not looking at running for the seat. I mean, I don't think that we should be appointing somebody then that is going to run because that gives them really a very distinct advantage over other candidates. But I believe it's also important that we set a date or we have some discussion about what would be the timeline. I know talking with legal, Jeff, with you, that there are some differences there, that if a petition were to be out there collecting signatures, that there would be a specific time clock that would require us to have an election potentially sooner than what we're talking about for a referendum, is my, potentially.
And I'd like to see if there's a way that we couldn't, because we always have the budget
issues, if we couldn't consolidate and have the special election as well as a referendum on the same date.
That would be, that would be my request, that we do it, because I think that we want to save taxpayer money on the one side, but I think that we need to know from the city attorney, that'd be my reason for him to look at it in terms of legalities, when we could schedule such an election and have a, give us a chance also to go out amongst the neighborhoods and have an open discussion about what the options are and why we would go one way. Because I think that the way that we've worked with our neighborhoods all through the years while I've been on the council is very open, very transparent. Here are the options that are out there. How would you like us to move forward? And I think that they need to know exactly what the implications are with all those. But certainly we want to have that fourth ward representation as quickly as possible. Mayor? Yes.
I totally agree. I think that Ward Four needs representation. I think until we are able to appoint an interim council person, that they do need to be aware, you've got two at-large here on the council, and I'm sure that we're both willing to represent you at the best of our abilities until then. I also agree, I don't think we should put them through the hoops of filing a petition with us, forcing it to an election. I have a feeling that if we were able to establish a date for the election, that the citizens would forego the petition and agree to whatever date we come up with as long as it's not a year from now. But I think that anybody who's interested in running for that seat is going to need probably two to three months anyway. And I would think that late February or early March would probably be agreeable with most people on that.
Any other thoughts? Bob?
I think, and our legal consultant can tell us, but I think we have some time limits still, that we have to do it within a certain period of time. And I think precedent was set when, I think it was Tom Velasquez resigned, we appointed Jerry Overman for him to set in temporarily without the opportunity to run for reelection. So I think we've set a precedent there.
Actually, I think it was when he had my seat.
Mike McPherson, was it?
No, no, I took Mike's.
Oh, you took Mike's. Jerry Overman and Harold Belkin are two precedents that we've made.
Yeah, we have set, established precedent on that.
Agreed.
Just a couple of quick thoughts. I want to be real clear that it's my ultimate intention to want to have a referendum, you know, that the fourth ward would pick their own person. But I also know that that will take months and we have a lot of important things to do and they ought to, you know, they ought to be well represented here. I'm, I'm proud to be an at-large council person. I joined with council member Moore, will, will be a hundred percent. I'd love to come out as we have a vacancy to any of the neighborhood association meetings and others, and I'm, I'm sure Skip is, is in complete agreement. The one thing, I was, I was elected from a special election. It followed a general election, not unlike Brian's, and my, my election was March third. And, you know, I would think that that's about the right timeframe to look at and to look at, and I think it probably fits a franchise fee timeline as well, if things fall into places as we, as we think they might. But I agree, they should be the same day. We should forecast that it's our intention to have an election so that residents of Ward Four don't go out and move into a different direction, not, not understanding our endgame. So I'm, I'm all for an appointment. I'd recommend that we put together some kind of paperwork where people at least have to apply with some kind of documentation. Maybe our application for commissioners is a good framework for that, and people could even do it online and a process to get this filled as soon as possible. So I think I completely agree with your recommendation.
I think Jeff wants me to come in.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just to clarify, council does have, and the timeline is already running because the resignation was effective October thirty-first, council does have forty days in which to make an appointment. By statute, making an appointment or setting a special election are mutually exclusive functions of the council. Council can pick one or the other. As, as a council member, Coleman has indicated, however, because of the franchise fee, there is a possibility to have an appointment as well as a special election that would occur prior to the next city election at which the appointment would normally run to, given that that would be a citywide referendum. So there could be an election for Ward Four that could be tied with a franchise fee referendum, and we'll be happy to explain that in, in further detail at the next meeting.
Any other thoughts, Ms. Manager?
Just a question. Mr. Coleman, your suggestion about having some sort of an application process, would you want that, the mayor, council members, would you want that process to start right away in the interim or do you want that to come back to?
No, I think the applications ought to start now so that we can sort out the process, but let's get those that are interested as quickly as possible. And I think what they could do is direct them to our office, and I would suggest maybe that we figure out how to put up on the website or at least let the neighborhood leaders know that, I don't know if she's in here, but maybe Amanda could handle that receipt of those. And then I would let our committee, so to speak, know and we'd begin the process, but then we would have it further clarified at the next meeting.
I think that, but, but, Mr. Coleman, I think you were talking about wanting like an application or something? Is that your thought? That people would submit an application or?
I don't think we ought to just let them submit a, a letter of interest.
Yeah.
And.
I think something that requires them to go through, not just, you know, a quick, put my name down on a sheet, but I think if we're going to be fair and select the best candidate, we want some information, a background and so forth.
The application for boards of commissioners would be the minimum.
I haven't looked at that in, in a while, but yeah.
Any other? All right, could we maybe have a motion to begin that process?
I'll move. Do I need to summarize? I think we've got a plan here.
Yeah, I think so, too.
I think, I think Jeff and I understand it, but it's important, this last point, is part of your motion, you're including this, initiating the process, right?
Application process.
Under the mayor to get going.
Have we discussed or is this maybe too early? But I think we should have some framework of a timeline for when we would like to have that appointment or the interview process to take place. I mean, I don't, I don't think it's effective to draw it out until February fifteenth and then have an election.
No, I think, I think we got to.
I mean, I think as soon as possible.
By the first meeting in December, we ought to have somebody selected.
I agree with that.
I agree.
Legally, the council has until December 10th. The first meeting is the 9th, so unless you had a special meeting on the 10th, it would have to be at the first meeting.
That's right. We're ready.
Very well.
We're fired up, we're ready to go.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Six yes.
All right. Part, I've got another request, which is, I submitted under 37. I have recently been appointed to the President's Task Force on Climate Preparedness and Resilience. I think the administration knows that there have been a lot of things that have happened across this country and certainly on those that are on the coastlines, but obviously we've seen it here in the heartland as well. And I am humbled and honored to represent not only Des Moines and the state of Iowa, but local government interests in this discussion. I think that the hopes is that we can pull together some of our thoughts and our experiences, and I know our staff has many from some of our flood and preparedness efforts as we moved into floods while I've been in office and specifically and most recently in 2008, 2010. And then looking at some of the things and the consequences of some of the experiences we even had in 2013 with the wettest six months from January till probably middle of June in our 140-year recorded history here in our area. And then moving from there in the specifically July and August period where we had about an inch of rain over that two-month period, which was also nearly a record, and to have that both occur in the same year was a little shocking to many of us. We think about our water supplies, we think about flooding issues, we think about all the other things that we have to do in our city to protect our people, our businesses, and our resources. So what I would like to do is not only to acknowledge this appointment, but to ask this council and staff to help me prepare for this discussion. And, Mr. Manager, let's bring together our department heads and any of the council members that would like to at least participate in the discussion, as we prepare for these discussions in Washington around how the federal government can work with us and other levels of government, state and county as well, and how we pull our resources together to prepare and to respond, to mitigate, and in some cases, recover, and what kind of help we could hope to achieve through some negotiations with the federal government and make it part of federal policy on how they deal with some of these issues. Certainly, preparing for them, we've discovered is, saves lots of money, but sometimes it's a little easier to get the money if you've got a horrible situation where people are under 10 feet of water and with another storm bearing down on them. The unfortunate thing is the media drives off and some of those things to happen in the flows of it. We would like to be prepared and try to protect our folks from those kinds of disasters. And obviously, all of our departments thinking together and all of our council members and trying to figure out how we work with all the other resources, whether it be the private sector, the county, the city, the state, the feds, and look at what it is that we can put together to protect our folks and just make everybody aware that I would like to at least have a motion to refer it to the city manager to bring all those voices together as we prepare, at least prepare me for that first meeting in the White House in mid-December. So if I open it, if anybody has any comments or questions or whatever, I'd be happy to field them. But in the meantime, if we could direct manager to do so, I would appreciate it.
Also.
Maybe just add to it a quick comment. Congratulations, and I think that's an excellent way for you to serve. I know this is an issue that's personally very important to you, so I'm happy to have a chance to be a national leader on it.
And, you know, unfortunately, historically, I've participated in, as our old business was under six feet of water in 93, why, I've got some personal experience in it as well, not only working to recover from it, but some of the heartache that goes along with the pain of an incident. So thank you, appreciate it.
Six yes.
All right, let's quickly move to 37I. Mr. Coleman, to discuss the need for Des Moines area plan and guidelines for affordable housing.
The bottom line of my comments relate to a desire to start some kind of planning process, to bring together key stakeholders, to help us create a plan, a strategy for dealing with the programs that serve the lowest-income folks in our community with regard to housing. Before I start talking about why I think this is needed at this time, let me just say, I recognize we are a community that has a lot of poor people in it, that depend on, you know, government's safety net to help them, and I'm all for that. And I want to make sure that we are a community that does a good job taking care of those that are in the most unfortunate of circumstances. I'd also say that I've had a chance to be a part of, tour, watch, provide services to many, many of the complexes that serve these people. And they're filled with really good people that care about our community and want to be good citizens and good neighbors. And so this is, my comments are not intended in any way to be derogatory or harmful to the people that are in these facilities. But we do have a growing issue in our community about the concentration where a number of these developments are occurring. And I'm sure you're like me, where you've heard from neighbors that are really, really concerned that either one of those developments are going to come to their neighborhoods because there's few places for them to go now, or they live close to one of these neighborhoods where there's really become a concentration. And they're worried that we're just dumping those kinds of subsidized developments in that, in those isolated areas. Now, I for one think the concentration of those is not good, not just because I think it lessens a little bit the neighborhood when you have so many of them in one spot, but I'm not sure it's the best thing for poor folks to be around only poor folks and not have a vision for how to pull themselves up and use the resources available to them to make their life better. And so I think, I think spreading these out is a much better strategy than a concentration of them. But there's a lot of communities around our metro area that have had none of these being developed, maybe an occasional senior housing for restricted-income people, but very few places that serve families around the metro area. And it's true of many of our neighborhoods in the city, too. Only a few neighborhoods have been the home to most of these, and it is a significant part of our city. And I, you know, I intend to be living here 30 years from now, and I don't want to look back 30 years, you know, and say that in 2013, we really made some mistakes and we weren't thinking about the long-term impacts of some of this on some of our neighborhoods. I'll tell you a couple of things. This program, the low-income housing tax credit program, has been around the state since 1987, and we've built 90 projects in the city since then. So that totals 5,000 units. So every year since 1987, we've averaged about 200 housing units being built in Des Moines in and around our communities and neighborhoods. Since 2005, there have been about 1,800 units built, apartment units of any type. About 1,000 of them fit underneath this program, and about 800 of them are market rate. And so you can see that the trend is that most of the development in our city has been through programs like this. And they've begun to gravitate towards a small number of areas in the community. That's in part because the way that these projects are scored at the state and get funding. You know, there's an encouragement to be in certain areas with certain amenities and services, and so it drives these projects to some specific locations. My thought is that the community, the neighbors, our citizens, are not going to continue to bless these developments if we don't have a plan for how we manage them and where they go in the future. And that's what I think we need to be about. I also think there's a point of view that the city can have about what kind of development, what kind of support and management, what kind of construction there is. Should market rate be a part of all these developments? What about rehabbing existing apartment complexes that are tired and old? There's a lot of things that I think that we could do, but I'm asking that we set this committee up. If it turns out that we think that council members are a good idea to serve on it, I would like to, and I'd like to be part of a plan. In my time on the council, I've approved hundreds and hundreds of these units, and I just think we're at the point where, for me to feel good about more usage of this program, we have to make sure that it serves in the best interest of the whole city.
Ms. Hensley?
I appreciate your comments, Chris, and I think it's really important. I don't disagree with having a discussion about it, but it's really important that we have stakeholders from all of the different pieces of this. I know you're talking about Iowa Finance Authority, and, you know, they've got very specific criteria that really determines whether or not somebody's going to go forward with a project, and that's driving the project as much as anything is. It's not only the city of Des Moines, but it's also the metro area, and you touched on that. I think that's probably a bigger part of this, is making sure that we look at it as an entire metro region, because we did a tour, and I see Eric out in the audience, we did a tour of the western suburbs a couple of weeks ago. They have a huge need out there, but you've got some of those communities that have not had a tax credit project for a decade or more, and they don't believe in the multifamily concept, even at market rate. So I understand what you're saying, and I don't disagree with it, but I think it's important that all of the stakeholders are at the table, because there clearly is a need. Des Moines has a higher need for it, if you just look at our population. We also have the qualified census tracts, which drives the projects for higher scoring, and you don't have that out in the suburbs. So IFA is going to have to be a very important part of this.
Absolutely.
You've also got it in the Tomorrow Plan. I know it's addressed in there, so I agree, but it's not going to be an easy discussion. And we need to figure out how to look at it on a metro basis so that it's equitable throughout the entire region.
Well, it is part of the Tomorrow Plan, which is a regional plan. We have to match the housing needs up, you know, geographically for the people that live and work around the metro area, which is very important. I totally agree that if we're going to be successful, it needs to include the state, IFA, our local developers that are doing this. It needs to be a cross-section of the people that have the expertise and are a part of this. Eric's here, Polk County Housing Trust Fund is certainly an important part of that. We need more affordable units in our community, there's no doubt about it. What I don't want to see happen is that we botch this and the community is, thinks that we've mismanaged it without a real plan, and it becomes hard to place these anywhere. It was just a little over a year ago where we had a number of large, angry, divisive meetings on the south side about a development there. Anam moved that project to a site that had already applied for tax credits, I think is a short version of how it happened. So that project could go forward, and we're providing shelter and housing for people that really need it now. But I think that we can, I think there's a very good chance that that kind of situation that we had on the south side will be replicated all over the city if we don't have a plan and a way to guide this. Your point about IFA is important. You know, when I first got on the council, they couldn't consider a project unless we had endorsed it. And then they watered it down a little bit by giving us just so many points if we endorsed it. And now they don't ask for the council's opinion on these at all, and I think that is problematic. They've also changed the rules so that with these tax credits, you can't even spend the kind of money that you used to. So by state rules, essentially, we're getting projects that aren't as high-quality and aren't going to be sustainable for decades, and I think that's a problem to the neighborhoods. I think as an urban area, we have to speak up and have a point of view at the state and with our own policies and zoning and so forth.
Unless there's any other questions, one of the other things that I think is pertinent to this discussion is an item that we approved already this evening, which has to do with CSBG program funds. And it seems as though, over time, all these federal programs are going down, and of course, these are all the programs that support all the people that live in a lot of these places. And whether it's LIHE programs and matching funds that go into some of those, community development block grants and all the matching dollars that we try to put together from the private sector and our city coffers to make this work so that we can meet the needs of our citizens. And it puts us in sort of a real unusual conundrum, if you will, is funds are going down, we have no control over where these things go, IFA is funding to a different plan, we have infrastructure that's already in place, and we look at cost of living, which includes transportation, and now it seems as though probably the cheapest place to build these kinds of projects based upon the restricted funding dollars is out in the middle of a field that's never been developed before, but yet somehow they have to get to work. So is that the lowest-cost place for these folks, you know, to live? It's an interesting discussion that I think we need to have, not only amongst ourselves, but much in part with the discussion and the final outcome of Capitol Crossroads and the Tomorrow Plan, and quite frankly, how we serve our citizens, and where do they live, where do they work, and how affordable is it for them to get there and believe that they can pay their bills and continue to meet the needs of their family. And so I agree with you, that discussion has to take place. Let's start it as quickly as possible and unfortunately, look at the funds that are available and that knowing that those funds that are coming down from the federal side probably are going to be less and less, at least in the near future, and available to some of these citizens. So how do we meet the needs and how do we, as a region, accommodate that? It's a huge issue and frustrating as well.
Mm-hmm.
Any other discussion? So what would you, what would you like a motion to be? Do you want to, Andrew, you want to come in here?
Well, just, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, before you make your motion, one thing you might want to think about in trying to figure out how to go forward here, is if you would give us a chance to kind of put some ideas down on paper for you in terms of how you might structure this process, and you've talked a lot about involvement of other entities and agencies and so forth. That really needs to be carefully crafted, and what might be helpful is if we put some time into thinking about that, maybe bring it back to you in two weeks at the workshop that we would have or at a council meeting, sort of lay that out for you. And then at that point, you could give us a specific direction of your life.
I will turn those comments into a motion in a minute. I want to, I know that some of the developers and interested stakeholders are here. Did anybody want to speak?
I'd like to make a comment. You know, as we go forward, we've got to keep in mind there are still needs out there. And I know, and I went out to Franklin, the open house there for Marrows, and he says he still has a waiting list on the south side out there. So we've got to keep that in mind, too. And also, one of the things you mentioned is transportation. I know we put out on the east side, we put in a number of units, and there is, Dart goes right by there, so they have easy access to transportation, and that's very much needed.
That's important.
Well, and... Well, and the other thing, too, that we, you know, we're a little bit out of sync here. We did submit comments on behalf of the city that would have been due probably back in August. I can't remember exactly the date, and we had a similar discussion at that time. You have projects that will come before the city that are due the first part of December, and awards will be given then the first part of March. So we're not going to have any impact other than to start really gearing up for the next round, because this train is already going down the track, and we're not going to be able to impact it. But we can continue that, start that dialogue with Iowa Finance Authority and start making them, you know, really aware and have them part of the solution with us. It's not going to be easy.
Eric?
Eric Burmeister, Polk County Housing Trust Fund, 108 Third Street. Thank you for getting the discussion started. You're right, it needs to be a regional plan. A lot of people in this room and around this table have been part of the Tomorrow Plan. The Tomorrow Plan does anticipate and call for a regional affordable housing plan, assuming that that plan is ultimately approved in September, or excuse me, in the spring of 2014, the Polk County Housing Trust Fund will start pulling together those constituency groups that you talk about to start that regional affordable housing plan. In preparation for that, we have been looking at quite a bit of data, not just from the city of Des Moines, but around all of Polk County, regarding the location of projects, regarding the location of the amenities that you talked about, Councilman Coleman, looking at the DART routes, looking at, basically now, starting to look at low-wage employment centers. That is, the folks that are in fact serving the community and making minimum wage or roughly, or less than $20,000 a year, where are they working? And then where are they living? And how are they getting from where they're living to where they're working? And frankly, shouldn't it be easier to go to work and to get home from work? And that's where you need to start talking about the appropriateness of citing affordable housing projects. And in fact, one of the things that we all know we have concerns about are the neighborhoods. And, you know, I was in development for a long time, and it's not just affordable housing that is tough to cite. It's any sort of change and any sort of development. And so the fact is, we need to start educating the region to reduce the stigma that goes with affordable housing. But we also need to start talking and having frank discussions about really what affordable housing does in a neighborhood. And so there is now, again, with the advent of technology, there is now software out there that can take into account any number of variables and can actually score a site right down to an address in Polk County in terms of its suitability for affordable housing. And that's a whole lot more sophisticated than what IFA is doing right now. That is taking into account increases and decreases in the value of residential properties. It is taking into account the historical performance of the schools where children will be going, and is starting to be able to dispel some of those myths and answer some of the very specific questions, legitimate questions, that neighborhoods have. And so I think with that transparency, hopefully, we'll be able to begin to have something that I call civil conversation with the neighborhoods. And also to let the community know that the vast majority of the folks that are looking for these affordable housing projects are folks that they see every day, whether it's waiting on them in the coffee shops, or serving them in restaurants, or working at Yonkers. And so that, as we say, if we want a community that works, then we need a workforce of all sorts of people. So with that said, we'll obviously be glad to do whatever we can to help facilitate that conversation, but it's time. If we're, as I say, if we're really as good as we like to believe we are around here, and as third parties keep telling us that we are, then it's high time that this region has an affordable housing plan and a way to move forward.
Agreed.
Thanks, Eric. Anybody else?
I have a motion.
You have a motion.
I will move that we begin the process of developing plans and principles for the city and the region, and refer it to the city manager to come back at the workshop in two weeks with the framework for how we might move forward, stakeholders and so forth.
All right, that completes that part. We're past five o'clock, so we're going to move directly to the hearings, and we'll open that with item 41. On a petition to establish the Beavordale Self-Supervised Municipal Improvement District, SMID, Council Communication Number 13-537. Is there anybody in the audience to speak to Beavordale SMID?
Good evening, Sasha Camper, 1804 38th Street in Beavordale. My husband and I have been active on the group that has been working with the city to steer this effort. I want to personally thank the city, Rick Clark, Chris Coleman, Hallie, others, who, when we ran into some difficulties around this time last year, rather than throwing out the baby with the bathwater, took the time to meet with our business and property owners and determine what the concerns originally were with our streetscape project and the SMID in the past. And I think we've all collectively learned quite a bit, been able to restructure the program, and it now enjoys fairly broad support, both from the residents and the business community in Beavordale. So I would put my vote in in favor of this project, and we're very much looking forward to moving this forward and seeing construction start in the spring. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming, Sasha. This has been a lengthy process, I mean, before I was on the council. So I'm glad, you know, as one of my last few meetings, to be able to move the ball forward on this. It's a great project. There is broad support for it, and I think it's going to be awesome. It's going to be tremendous for the neighborhood. So I would gladly move this item, and I'm sure Chris has some comments as well.
Yeah, I think, just to make sure that I'm correct, I'll look at one of our staff, but the broad support is not hyperbole. I think of all the property owners, not one, zero objected to the forming of the SMID, and over 75% voluntarily returned their form. So we've come a long way, and I'm happy it got done before your time on the council ended. So thanks, Hallie.
Six yes.
All right, great project. Item 42, items regarding property at 5035 Hubbell Avenue, Golinski Family Real Estate LLC. A is to amend the Des Moines 2020 Community Character Plan to revise the existing future land use designation from commercial auto-oriented, small-scale strip development to planned business park. Subject property is owned by Homemakers Plaza, Inc. B is a hearing on the rezoning of the property from A1 Agricultural Limited to M1 Light Industrial. C is the first consideration of the ordinance above. D is the final consideration of the ordinance above, and the waiver is requested by the applicant and requires six votes. Is there anyone here to speak to this item specifically regarding 5035 Hubbell? Yes, sir.
Mayor, members of the council. My name is Roger Brown, Assistant City Attorney. This is a proposal to rezone the property with conditions. The attorney for the applicant, Mr. Golinski, had represented to me that he would be bringing the acceptance of rezoning, agreeing to those conditions to this meeting. My understanding is that there has been some unexpected events, and he hasn't been able to bring that to me. For that reason, I would ask that this be continued to your next meeting, so that if you choose to approve it, it could be approved with the conditions that were recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Unless someone is here that brought that on behalf of the Golinski family.
I'm actually Jared Johnson. I'm working with Gary Golinski on the project. One thing that was a problem that we needed was outside storage on the east lot of the property. What I'd like to say is we would use opaque fencing, heavily landscaped, nothing higher than the fence line is what the problem was. I also brought-
Jared, do you, let me ask you specifically, do you have the documents that are necessary that Roger pointed out that you could present to us this evening to okay and approve to move this forward, or are we going to have to wait to do it? We'd love to see everything you have, but on the other hand, if we can't do it tonight, maybe we ought to do the whole thing and continue it to the next meeting.
Okay, yeah, probably continue because we didn't know how.
Jared, you okay with that? All right.
Continue.
All right.
You know, I appreciate Roger's comments, and we had talked beforehand, and I think that's the best thing we could do. Gary called and said he's going to, he had to take his wife to Mayo, and he wouldn't be here. But he did say that someone here represented him, and that I would move to continue this to our next meeting.
All right, we thank you guys for coming down very much, but I think we ought to have the documents, and we can take care of it all at once.
Roger did say that the documents were repaired, and Gary had them, and he thought they were going to be returned, but they didn't get here for this meeting, so.
Okay, so that's continued to the 18th?
Yeah.
And then hopefully we can get it all taken care of that night? Thanks.
Six yes.
All right, item 43 is an item regarding property at 301 and 309 Southeast 8th Street, Raccoon Street Warehouse LLC. Planning and Zoning Commission recommends denial. A is to amend the Des Moines 2020 Community Character Plan to revise the existing future land designation from downtown support commercial to general industrial. B, the hearing on rezoning the property from M1 Light Industrial to M2 Heavy Industrial and to remove the property from DO Downtown Overlay to allow a future request for a conditional use to allow a beverage container recycling business. The roll call contains alternative motions. Just to clarify this, Mike Ludwig, would you come forward and kind of tell us what the recommendation is and how we might proceed, or how you would recommend, maybe, given the planning zones recommendation to deny, how we would move this forward?
Mayor, county members of the council, Michael Ludwig, Planning Administrator. The Planning Commission's recommendation is denial on the rezoning. Part of the recommendation that they received from the staff was for denial of the rezoning. We believe going to the Board of Adjustment for a use variance is a more appropriate mechanism for considering the use. The reason being that we could place a sunset on a use variance on the property, and given the future vision for the market district, I think changing the zoning at this time to M2 would be more detrimental than considering a use variance on the property and having a possible sunset on the future use of the property.
Mike, were you able to discern if they met with the historic East Village?
I believe at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, they'd indicated they had met with the East Village.
Do you know the outcome of that meeting?
I do not.
I believe we got a letter from-
We got a letter.
... that said that they were, had a chance to meet with them, that they were very supportive of it, after they'd had a chance to sit down and discuss it in detail with them. So it's definitely a yes.
I believe there's a letter in your package.
There is.
Yeah, there is a letter in the package.
Again, I think that that same support could be shared with the Board of Adjustment on the use variance approach, and obviously, the staff would take that into consideration in their recommendation.
Okay, so the commission recommends denial. Does staff also do the same and then go through this other process that you just outlined?
Yes, we recommend-
Through an alternative motion?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's my understanding that the property owners are supportive of this process.
Yeah, I'll let them speak for that. I believe, again, they submitted this application. We already have a Board of Adjustment application submitted by the applicant for a use variance. So-
Mike, if you'll stay nearby in case we need an update, the applicants want to give us a quick idea, give us your name and address, please.
Dave Harmeyer, 2486 Street, Urbendale, part of the ownership group. You know, what Mike is saying, that's a little bit of news to us. We knew that was the process if we got denied here tonight, that we would do that. So upon their recommendation, we did make an application to the Board of Adjustment for the next meeting. My understanding is it's a harder way to go, to be denied at city council and then go to the Board of Adjustment versus getting an approval for the zoning and then going to the board for the use. I guess, I don't have experience with that, so you guys would have to tell me if that's, if it's the same process that you'd go through at the Board of Adjustment.
Let me ask you a couple of quick questions. Based upon the use, I think that you're asking for to this recycling operation, I think you understand the long-term visions for the East Village on what the uses are going to be for this kind of an area. I think what Mike has recommended is that through a use variance, we could put a sunset on it and say, make it a five-to-10-year period or something, and you would get what you wanted for a specified period of time, or at least one that made sense to everybody, and then you would be able to do that. If we rezone it, based upon what Mike just said, then it's rezoned, and there's no sunset on the zoning, and it'd be hard without some other agreement, which would be far more complicated, to come back and say, wow, you know, seven years ago, you agreed that, you know, as of this period of time, we were going to do that, and it looks like the whole neighborhood's moving forward, and now you or a future owner may decide they want to keep doing what they're doing, but it's not compatible with everything that goes on. I think that what Mike's suggesting is it recognizes the long-term vision, but also recognizes your immediate need and opportunity. And if we recommend to the, our development department to make the recommendation that we understand what you're trying to do, and this is what we're trying to accomplish, I think it'd go a long ways to make your-
You, so you would, to the Board of Adjustment, come the recommendation that you guys are okay with the use?
That might be what the motion would be here. I can't-
If you were going to do that, that would be fine with us. We bought the property because we shared a vision of the East Village, and we, in fact, they wanted a five-year lease with three five-year options, and we said, no, we'll do one five-year option. So our letter of intent with Crink is for 10 years total. So anything that would, and I think that lease wouldn't begin until March, so if we could get it for 10 years from that date, we would accept that. That would fit our needs.
Can I? Bob, and then Chris.
I met with Mr. Polly, I and Mr. Harmeyer, and went through and looked at the facilities and that. And I'd think that, I'd like to maybe refer it back to the city manager and staff and see if there's some way we could work around this and address it in that manner, rather than force them to go to the zoning board adjustment, if that's some way to approach it.
Mr. Mahaffey, council members, I, that would be one approach, Mr. Mahaffey. I think the recommendation that Mike Ludwig and the Planning and Zoning Commission have outlined, if I understand the process, is the most streamlined to get from here to there. The Board of Adjustment in one meeting, if I get it, Mike, I'm looking at you, and one meeting can approve this, and you're done. That, in reality, is a shorter way to get to the end that you want to get to and would hopefully get you what you need to do. My suggestion, Mr. Mahaffey, council member, is that you follow that recommendation. I think these gentlemen will be happy with the result, if that's the will of the council, and gets you where you want to go. And I think it is easier than going the other approach. Doing this and accomplishing the rezoning is contrary, I think, what the mayor's saying, is contrary to the city's long-term vision of this area, not being really a heavy industrial area, but being something different. So that's why I think this Board of Adjustment action is a way to address that issue without creating a larger problem for the city.
Chris Coleman.
Just a couple of comments first, completely off-subject, but it's a good reason for us to move quickly on the fourth ward vacancy. You know, here's an important project in that ward. I visited the site, and they showed it to me, and I'm convinced that for a period of time, this is a pretty good use for there. There's certainly a lot more- There's certainly a lot more obstacles in terms of the current use in and around this building, scrap yards and other recycling facilities and all that, that this would not be the most detrimental use and be a big improvement for the foreseeable future. And I know Dave and the folks at Vista, and I really believe them, that they've made this investment because this might be a really good opportunity, one well beyond renting it to a redemption center. So I believe it's in their financial interest as well. My- so with that said, you probably have picked up that I want this to be approved some way, and so maybe Jeff, Mr. Attorney, you could tell me if there's a way for the council to preserve our right to take this up while letting the Board of Adjustment have the first shot at it.
I think Roger has an explanation he'd like to provide.
Okay.
Mayor, Members of the Council, the staff recommendation is for to present it to the Board of Adjustment with a request for a use variance. To present it to the Board of Adjustment, they have to have applied for and been denied rezoning. But your decision to deny zoning on the property in light of the current circumstances, if the Board of Adjustment were to make a decision to deny it, anyone who's on the prevailing side could move for a motion to reconsider at a meeting subsequent to the Board of Adjustment's action and bring it back for reconsideration by this council. That has been done in the past, but for it to go to the Board of Adjustment for a use variance approval, there has to be a denial of rezoning today.
But the council can revisit that. I mean, my understanding is there's a fairly large risk involved with getting denied at the council, and then the Board of Adjustment has quasi-judicial authority, so we can't even make a recommendation to them. They end up denying it. You're saying we would have the option to reconsider.
Anyone who's on the prevailing side of that motion could make a motion for reconsideration. We would ask that most reconsideration be made at one meeting, so we can publish notice that we're going to reopen at a later meeting, so there wouldn't be a two-meeting delay, but that there is precedent, this board has done that in prior cases.
Would we have to make motion to reconsider before it goes, before the zoning Board of Adjustment?
No.
If we can do that, if they deny it, we can reconsider.
Yes, because until they've made a decision, you really have no reason to want to bring it back.
I guess I would say, and I echo your point about not having a ward representative here to take the lead on it, but I guess my sense is, this is a good project, it's a better use than what's being used there currently, and I agree with staff's perspective that we have a vision for what it's gonna be. I'm just not sure this specific location is gonna be what we want it to be. My dad always taught me, something's only worth what someone's willing to pay for it. And I think in this location, you don't have people bidding, you know, you don't have bidding wars for this location, or even the surrounding areas, at least in the short-term, five, 10 years. So I guess I would be, depending on what the applicant would like to do, I would be comfortable denying the request, putting in the public record that I'm supportive of the project, and would consider it, reconsider it, should the Board of Adjustment vote against the project.
I'm where you are, I think. You haven't weighed in, but-
Yeah, if it can be reconsidered, and I think we're in favor of taking that route that Mr. Clark had laid out.
I'll move that. Can somebody tell us the timeframe of what the Board of Adjustment meeting would be? How long from now?
It's the 18th.
The 18th of November.
That's probably- probably not, because that's a Monday, I think.
That's a Monday, yeah, that's the council meeting.
That's the next council meeting.
Okay.
Mike, when's the next one? Go get it.
The applicant's application was submitted for the November 20th Board of Adjustment meeting, so.
Okay. Well, I'll move it, and I would appreciate that the council be informed of the action by the Board of Adjustment, and I would be happy if I'm on the prevailing side to introduce this as a reconsideration at the first meeting following that, if it is not approved at the zoning Board of Adjustment.
Does that fit into your timeline?
Yes, I believe it is the quickest way to go.
We come back on December 9.
And thank all of you for your time, we really appreciated it.
Dave, thank you.
Nice project. Thank you.
Bob. Okay, item 44, on items regarding 2679 Murray Street Farm Co. Properties LLC. A is to amend the Des Moines 2020 community character land use plan to revise the existing future land designation from low-density residential to commercial pedestrian-oriented neighborhood node. B, hearing conditionally approving the rezoning, the property from R160 one-family low-density residential to limited C1 neighborhood retail commercial to allow the reuse of the existing commercial building for neighborhood-level retail or office uses, subject to conditions. C is the first consideration in the ordinance above, and D is the final consideration in the ordinance above. The waiver is requested by the applicant and requires six votes. By the way, Mr. Attorney, is it relates to item D, would you tell us with a six-member council, is that, could that be a five-to-one vote?
No, sir, it would still require six votes.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. All right, let's open item 44 regarding 2679 Murray Street. Is there anybody here to speak to that item?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Members of the Council. I'm Michael Wallnerman, I live at 7 Southwest 56th Street in Des Moines, Iowa. I'd like to answer any questions you may have, but I'd also like to request to take final action today and waive any future hearings.
Did you hold a meeting with the neighbors that live within 250 feet?
Yes, we did.
And the outcome?
Two people came by and visited for about 20 minutes.
So there was really no opposition?
Correct.
I think adding this to that area over there would be a very positive move and try and improve the area, so I think that's a good use of that building, so.
So is that your motion to move?
If there's nobody else to talk, I'd move item 44, A, B, C, and D.
Which Mike includes the final consideration request.
Thank you. You can come back to our meetings just for fun.
And you got your six votes you needed.
Thank you, appreciate your attendance.
Good job.
Thank you.
Item 45, conditionally approving the request of Ofer Kamari.
Ofer Kamari.
Sorry?
Yeah, Ofer Kamari.
Okay, stand corrected. To rezone 6220 Grand Avenue from Floodway to U1 Flood Plain to allow for consideration of a conditional use for an amusement enterprise business to allow reuse of the existing vacant go-kart track and miniature golf amusement complex. A is the first consideration in the ordinance above. Step forward.
Hi, my name is Ofer Kamari, this is my son, Jordan Kamari, and 932 59th Street, Des Moines, Iowa. We went through the rezoning process, and we just need to approve.
I would be happy to move item 45A.
All we're really looking for is to take this old abandoned track, go-kart track, and make it a nice place where it can improve the neighborhood and help the kids have a good place to go and hang out, rather than doing stuff that's not good for kids.
All right, sounds like you've got a motion here, but we've got our community development person coming up behind. You want to make a couple of comments, Michael?
Mayor, Members of the Council, Michael Ludwig, just wanted to confirm, the action before you tonight, rezones only a portion of the property that's actually outside of the regulatory floodway. They will, a portion of the property still will be in the floodway, and by essentially denying the zoning on that portion of the property tonight, they would go for a use variance to the Board of Adjustment to use those existing buildings that are in the- remain in the floodway, so, just to confirm.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So to do what Mike said?
Um, yes, 45, 45A.
Six yes.
You got it.
Very good.
Just one more question. So now I need to go back to the city to talk to them where the boundary and all that?
Michael, would you kind of maybe talk to Ofer?
Ofer.
Ofer. Would you talk to Ofer and kind of go through what his next steps need to be, but I think as far as what we need to do here, we've moved you forward.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Okay, item 46, on vacation of a segment of Southeast 4th Street adjoining 626 Southeast 4th Street to allow for the construction of the Southeast 4th and Shaw Streets Storm Water Pump Station Project. A is the first consideration in the ordinance above, and B is the final consideration in the ordinance above. The city engineer requests the waiver, and it requires six votes. Is there anybody here who would like to speak regarding this pump station? Seeing none, could we have a motion?
Better wait to get Christine back to get six votes.
All right, is it tabled or continue?
Move to reconsider the item, and I'll see in the poll later.
That's exactly what I was saying.
Exactly, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Okay, we're moving forward. Item 47, on consideration of license agreement with Wellmark Inc. for the use of city-owned property located east of College Avenue and Michigan Street in Central Place for construction and maintenance of a fiber optic line and related utility equipment, $400, Council Communication Number 13-534. Anybody here to speak to this item, a license agreement with Wellmark? Seeing none, could we have a motion on that one?
Move approval.
All right, item 48, in consideration of license agreement with Wellmark upon the city-owned property located north of East Douglas Avenue and Sergeant Park for construction and maintenance of a fiber optic line and related utility equipment for $100 on that particular piece of property, and Council Communication Number 13-532. Anybody here to speak to that item?
Seeing none, I'd move item 48.
Mr. Attorney, would you be okay if we go back to 46 at this point? We do have one more item. Okay, thank you. Let's take up item 46, which is on the vacation of a segment of Southeast 4th Street adjoining 626 Southeast 4th Street to allow for a construction of Southeast, of the Southeast 4th and Shaw Streets Storm Water Pump Station Project. A, first consideration in the ordinance above, and B is the final consideration in the ordinance above. The waivers requested by the city engineer and require six votes, and this was moved for consideration at a later moment when we had six votes in the room. So if somebody could move it, this would be good, while we have six votes in the room.
I'll move it.
Okay, skip moved, as before.
Six yes.
All right, now, it may look like these two items are related, so let's go back to item 49, on Southeast 4th and Shaw Streets Storm Water Pump Station, a resolution approving the plan specifications, form of contract documents, engineers estimate designating the lowest responsible bidder as story construction company. Patrick L. Geary is the chief operating officer, $2,112,500, Council Communication Number 13-535. A is approving the contract and the bond and permission to sublet. Is anybody here to speak to this item?
Just a question, do we have any idea how many dollars we spent for pump stations this year?
Mr. Mahaffey, I don't know, off the top of my head, I'd be happy to get-
Seems like we've had a lot of them.
We've done a lot. This particular one has too many dollars of HUD, CDBG, DR funds, so they're federal dollars that are allocated through the state of Iowa to the city, and as you point out, Mr. Mahaffey, we've done other pump station projects with similar kinds of funding sources, so these are all very good things that make the city better and better protected against flooding events, so they're very good projects.
I don't disagree, and they certainly are needed, yes.
Right, and it's been moved? You're gonna move it, Bob?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, we're going to reconsider item 45.
Do we need to reconsider 45?
Mayor, County Members, Council, Michael Ludwig, the applicant intended to request a waiver of second and third readings on their item, so that they could proceed to the Board of Adjustment if the council would be willing to consider that and reconsider item 45.
Okay, let's-
Can we just add a motion?
Well, I think we can quickly just do it. Let's, motion to reconsider item 45, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. Okay, so it has been moved by Hallie to move item 45 again, but to waive the second and third reading, so that they can move ahead to the Board of Adjustment. Rick?
Thank you.
Okay, so that ends the hearings at 5:53. That takes us back to item 38. Item 38 is a letter from the Rotary Club of Des Moines, AM Foundation, regarding naming of proposed new playground to be built by the Rotary Club along the Principal Riverwalk to be named Rotary Riverwalk Park. We have a speaker.
Mr. Mayor and the city council, thank you. My name is John Bauslog, I'm an attorney here in town. My office address is 604 Locust Street, Suite 222, Downtown Des Moines. I'm here as a member of the Rotary Club of Des Moines, AM. We have submitted a letter for your consideration. Back when Principal Financial Group started the Riverwalk project some eight or nine years ago, our Rotary Club thought it'd be a really neat thing to have along the Riverwalk and be a playground for the kids to play at, and I was honored to be at your groundbreaking or grand opening here a couple of weeks ago, ribbon cutting of the hub spot, as well as the naming of the Women of Achievement Bridge, and I'm happy to announce that six Rotary Clubs here in central Iowa have banded together to raise $500,000, and we're gonna build, or we propose, building a park like none other in the world, because we believe that the city of Des Moines is none other than, nothing like us in the world. We believe it should be unique, and it's gonna be unique. So what we presented to you today is a letter, just to begin the process. We'll be back and share the pictures and share the further excitement with regard to this playground, but we're like your approval to, I guess, start the process of naming the Rotary Riverwalk Park. It would be located on the west side of the river, just north of the landing from the Women of Achievement Bridge, so it'll be just east of Wells Fargo Arena and just north of the landing of the bridge.
And south of the dog park?
I beg your pardon?
And south of the dog park.
Yes. I don't know exactly where the dog park would be located. Yes. Yes. I'm happy to make a motion to move this to Parks and Rec and start the naming process, and I think it's just a great project when you've got so many different Rotary Clubs coming together and raising a $500,000 plus, so if we have more groups that would like to come together with $500,000, that would be great. I hope you do.
John, thank you for coming down.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Six yes. Six yes.
Item 39 from Max Arnauer III representing the Watcher South Neighborhood Association Regarding the Christ the King Senior Housing II LLP at 5602 Southwest 9th Street. Is Max still in the house? All right.
I'll go ahead and move that we receive and file this letter and it be included with the application for Christ the King on their tax credit project.
Right, it's been moved. Any discussion? Seeing none? Coleman?
Six yes.
All right, item 40 from Judy Watt of 6980 Cody Drive, number 24, in West Des Moines, Iowa, regarding animals at the Des Moines Farmers Market.
You gave me that, you gave, this is like going to Disneyland compared to what you've been doing, but I think it's a real important issue now. The market has gotten very crowded. We have a lot of children in strollers. I've personally seen some animals getting in fights. We've got a lot of health issues with a lot of food being served down at Farmers Market now, and I think that now that we have dog parks for the children, for these dogs, there's four of them in the city now, I understand, starting this last spring, that it really is not a place for the animals. Everybody that signed the petition that I'm here to present has had dogs, loves dogs, and I have talked to Sergeant Butler from the Police Department that is in charge of the animal control, and he, of course, personally is in agreement and has an animal of his own, but I'm an advocate of animals, and I don't think it's good for them either. So it's, I think it's a big thing right now, and I know there hasn't been a serious incident, but I think it's only a matter of time before we do, so I'm trying to be proactive. And prior to this, I did send a letter with a copy of an ordinance from Madison, Wisconsin, and Sergeant Butler also has gotten in touch with Omaha and Kansas City and said they have similar ordinances preventing animals at their markets. So I don't know who I present the petition to. Okay.
Could we have a motion receiving and file petition?
Move to receive and file petition.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes.
Can I...
Yes, please.
Just make a couple of comments, and what I would like to do, this is obviously an issue that people have strong feelings on both sides of it, you know, dog lovers as well, and I have some of the same concerns that you do, because I've been down at the market, and it seems like some of the dogs are extremely large. But what I would like to see us do is to refer it back to the city manager's office and work directly with the Downtown Community Alliance, who has responsibility for the market, and have everybody work together to figure out if it is an ordinance that we need, or if they have some other thoughts and suggestions, because I...
And I agree with that, Chris. I actually talked to the downtown Farmers Market people, and they said it was a Sydney ordinance.
Right.
And they didn't, they were, they could do street closures, but that doesn't solve the issue...
Correct, right.
...of the animals. And I've tried to go through different avenues rather than come to the council, but I really feel strongly enough about it that I wanted to take the time to address it, because I do, I love dogs, and I think almost everybody in the room can feel the same way, but that's part of the reason I'm here, because I've seen dogs get in fights down there, and I've seen them defecating on the streets, and I've seen older people almost get tripped up by them, and animals in strollers, animals with children in strollers that are at eye level, and it only takes one irritated animal to take a bite out of a child, so, anyway.
You know, it just, I guess what I would like from the city council's perspective is to add that there's another issue that's down at the Farmers Market that needs to be addressed, and I've gotten a number of complaints on this, and this is First Amendment issues and some of the verbal attacks that are made on individuals down there. So if we could just look at how we can work with the Farmers Market, because I've had a number of complaints from individuals as to the inappropriate attacks on them, and I know it ties back to First Amendment rights, but there has to be a balance between what's appropriate and not appropriate, and it seems like it's crossed the line of appropriateness this year, more towards the end of the year. So in addition to the ordinance on the dog-related issues, if we could also ask that, I would also ask that city manager work with Community Alliance and look at helping them deal with that, because I know they're feeling their hands are tied as well.
Well, I think the ordinance, I think you're holding the ordinance.
We've kind of closed the hearing on this item, so we're kind of addressing it, so you'll stay available if we have a couple of other questions. Anybody else over here have some ideas?
Sure, thank you.
Thoughts? Skip?
I would just make the comment, I do want to make sure that the issues are differentiated. I'm okay with the motion, but I do think the First Amendment is different than...
I agree.
...dogs and a safety issue.
Okay, so, just to clarify, I think the motion, Ms. Hensley, was to refer to the manager's office to come back with a report, tell us about everything that she mentioned, including fights and health issues and dog bites.
And working with Downtown Community Alliance.
And working with the Community Alliance, and if you would do that and then address some of these other issues.
Part B would be the First Amendment issues.
I think it looks like a total review really we ought to just take of the Farmers Market and related issues.
That would be fine.
The assignment's getting bigger as we go along.
But the good news is, you've got until next May.
Yeah, that, if I could, Mr. Mayor, the First Amendment rights that you refer to have been examined a few times by our police department and city attorney's office, and they are very difficult issues. If it was an easy problem to solve, I think we would have done it, but it's not, and we will do exactly as you have directed, but I'm not exactly sure where it's going to end up. We'll have to work with Jeff and our police department, who struggle with these issues a lot, and it's a very, it's a very difficult one in this instance.
That's why you guys get the big bucks. We want you to tackle these issues.
We will do so, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Coleman?
Six yes.
All right, Hallie, do you have a motion to adjourn as city council and reconvene as Board of Health? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We now sit as Board of Health. Item 1 is approving the legal department to proceed with court action seeking authority to abate the public nuisances at the following locations. A is 802 Lion Street, which is a fire damaged structure, and B is 1130 11th Street, which is another fire damaged structure, in this case, a garage. Is there anybody in the audience to speak to either one of these items? All right, could we have a motion? Do we have a motion to approve? We do. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes unanimously, and if we could have a motion to adjourn as Board of Health. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We said adjourn, and I would tell everybody on the air and also in the audience, tomorrow is Election Day. One of our most important duties as a citizen is to get out and vote, and we've got not only elections, but we also have an item up for referendum and vote. So everybody should get out, let's vote, and we'll see you next time. Thanks.